The council meeting on February 13th is called to order at 8:02. We're going to do an invocation, but first we're going to do the pledge of allegiance, and I'd like the Boy Scouts to come forward, please.
All not in uniform, hand over heart, scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To.
Please may remain standing. Mr. Ticky, can you take us through?
God, grant us serenity to accept things we cannot change, courage to change the things we can, and wisdom to know the difference. Amen.
Before everybody sits down, I'd like to have a moment of silence for two people, John Rich, who was an EMS person for many years, and Mrs. Mary Hardy. She was 101. She was the original Sterling House Executive Director. So for a moment in peace, silence, please. First item, approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve last month's minutes?
Motion by Wally Kadim.
A motion by Wally Kadim. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of approval of the minutes, vote aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes 10 to 0. The next thing, if Mrs. Cabral could come forward. I don't think Carol needs no introduction. If you don't know Carol, you probably just moved to town five minutes ago. She's been around a long time. She is the reason why I'm standing here. She recruited me many years ago, and there's probably a lot of folks around town, Democrats and Republicans, that are involved and have good memories of Carol. So I'd like to read this. "The town of Stratford, in grateful recognition of the loyal and devoted public service rendered by Carol Cabral, having served 32 years with fidelity and devotion as both clerk in the office of the register of voters and as council clerk for the town of Stratford. In grateful recognition of the loyal and devoted public service rendered by Carol Cabral, having served with fidelity and devotion as a valued employee of the town of Stratford, both as clerk in the office of the register of voters and as council clerk. As evidence of its sincere appreciation, this certificate has been issued pursuant to a direction of its town council acting on behalf of our fellow townsmen, as an enduring testimony to her unselfish service and the faithful discharge of a public trust. And witness whereas has caused the sane to be subscribed and the corporate seal of the town of Stratford to be affixed by his town council chairman on this 13th day of February 2018." Thank you, Carol.
It's all right to say a couple of words. You've been here 30-plus years. You can say something, young lady. You can take a moment. We love you. We ain't in a rush tonight. Love you, young lady.
Okay, the next thing on the communication bills, petitions. There's a letter from the planning commission. It's for information only, that they're planning on filling the town planner in the next budget. 3.2, is there a motion? I need a motion to accept the resignation of Judith Hampel.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Judith Hampel.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Pia, seconded by Mr. Kadim. Any discussion? If not, I'll call to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 10-0. With that, I'd like to take time to turn over to our mayor. Okay, everybody, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Yep. We'll be back in maybe 10 minutes, to be safe. We convene at 8:13, and we're going to continue with the mayor's report. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to offer my congratulations also to Carol. You and I have been together since volunteering at Sterling House, and then with my mom as your children's teacher at Wilcox. And so you've done such great things for the town, and I can't thank you enough for how much you've improved all of our lives and that of the citizenry of Stratford. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Very proud to have served with you, so. And then also, Mr. Chair, through your comments about John Rich and Mary Hardy, I was fortunate enough to serve with both of them as well. John and I were volunteers together at the Explorer Post, and Mary was a mentor to me at Sterling House. And so I thought it was of great tribute to mention them both together, and also when we honored Carol. So it was three very special people we talked about today. So thank you, Mr. Chair. So the fiscal year 1819 budget has taken a large portion of the administration's time these last couple of weeks, and we will be doing that for the next few weeks going forward. We have conducted numerous meetings with agency and department heads, and they've been involving extensive reviews of operating budgets. Some of these agency budgets, we will be opening early to the council before the mayor proposes the budget, which is something that hasn't been done in the past. And some of these meetings are still ongoing, and they should be concluded in a week or two. As I noted at the last council meeting, we are using a zero-based budgeting method. We are rebuilding all department budgets from the ground up with an eye towards maximizing efficiencies, eliminating what is which is unnecessary, and providing a town government that operates lean. It's also to be noted that we seek to find savings and efficiencies in local government, and Governor Malloy has delivered a proposed budget to the state legislature this year, which cuts an additional $1.091 million from Stratford. You may remember that we incurred a $2.8 million cut last year from Governor Malloy, and it looks like the governor is going to continue to find ways for towns to pay for the fiscal mismanagement of the state. We will be continuing to fight for our share of state funding this year to ensure our local property taxpayers are not forced to pick up that tab again from the state. This weekend, we had a little bit of a surprise. As most of the residents of Stratford know, that we all experienced a massive power outage on Saturday evening into Sunday morning. The United Illuminating Outage impacted residents in Stratford, as well as Milford and Bridgeport. The outage was due to a failure at two substations. Stratford's police, fire, EMS dispatch, and public works departments were on-site and managing the emergencies during that time. I'd like to thank all the departments, and all the staff, and their personnel for their outstanding performance during that outage. We were currently awaiting a detailed report from UI as to the ongoing investigation, the cause for the power failure. I'd also like to take a moment to remind the residents that during any outage, they should only call 911 in an actual emergency. Though many may not have realized it, we brought in two or three extra dispatchers that night to cover the 911 calls because nobody really knew what was going on, so a lot of people were calling the dispatch center. In the month of January, at the end of January, I attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Washington, D.C., with some key staff, and joined Mayor's Ben Blake of Milford and Tony Harp of New Haven and Mark Loretty of Shelton, among others. The conference was informative, with a number of sessions that my staff and I found beneficial. We additionally took some time in Washington to visit numerous officials concerning important issues to Stratford, including U.S. Senator Christopher Murray and Linda McMahon, Administrator of the Small Business Association. Discussions included various important issues in town, including the status of the Army Engine Plant as a primary redevelopment opportunity. The state grant from Roosevelt Park was announced by Governor Malloy and Connecticut Deep, and authorized the grant of $261,240 to obtain two separate parcels of undeveloped woodland that totaled 19 acres, in an interest of preserving this area as understemned New England forest wildlife habitat. I have an upcoming town hall event, an open forum meeting for residents on Tuesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, February 28th, at 5:00 p.m. here in council chambers. During my time as a state legislature, I held many office hours events, and I found them to be constructive and helpful. I look forward to continuing that tradition as mayor. Future dates will be announced in upcoming weeks. And for any residents who are not able to attend those office hours on February 28th, they're always welcome to call my office directly and set up a meeting. Many towns' residents have already availed themselves to do so, and my door is always open. Mr. Chair, I'd like to read into the record some commission nominations. The first would be Booth Park, which is appointed by the mayor per Code 5-42. The town council members, I'll leave to you, and the electorate members, I would name as Bessie Burton, Richard Brown, Donna Coserta, J. Vincent Chase, Louis DiCilio, Andrea Kawakami, Stephanie Phillips, Anna Scala, and Raymond Cola. Alternate members are Frank Keckow, Paul DeVito, Adam Hosa, and Elliot Severn. The Economic Development, Economic and Community Development Commission nominated the mayor and ratified by the council per 5-19 of the Town Code. The electorate members are Jim Benson, Frank Bavacqua, John Dobis, Mark Calzone, Colin Kennedy, Gary Pia, Neil Sherman, and Randy Vidal. The ex-official members are two members of the council, myself, Economic and Community Development Director Mary Dean, Executive Director of the Stratford Chamber of Commerce, which I'm pleased to announce is Joan Law, and a planning and zoning representative or of the local reuse authority. Alternate members are Michael Vicarelli and Robert Rosati. The Community Development Subcommittee members are Councilman Greg Cahn, Councilman David Harden, Councilman Wally Kadim, Casimir Mazera, and Jason Santi. And the Roosevelt Forest Commission, according to the Town Code 152-2, three-year terms appointed by the mayor. The council liaison is usually the District 9 councilperson, that would be Mr. O'Brien. And the electorate members are Frank Bavacqua, Robert David, Charles Emerson, Bob Ford, Alan Luella, Peter Mariconda, Ellen Surba Carey, and Elaine Watson. Alternate member is Edward Bitsko. The Stratford Redevelopment Agency, 5-98 of the Town Code, appointed by the mayor. Electoral members are Eric Hampton, Anthony Nizardo, George Perlm, Richard Whalen, and Randy Vidal. And the TOD Subcommittee of the Stratford Redevelopment Agency are Tom Dillon, Tom Fahy, Eric Hampton, Michael Henrich, Patty Golelow, Mark Jarvis, and Daniel Pato. Another item of interest, sorry, Mr. Chair, I have a few more things. The Elagroso Regional Pool, as you know, the previous council authorized for the administration to go into a lease agreement with the state of Connecticut, and we have for the Elagroso Pool. We are currently working on a variety of things to improve the pool and bring it up to code. We're patching the roof, improving the fire doors, renovating the pump, sandblasting, painting, and draining the pool, installing new LED lighting, and improving the parking. And then, last but not least, in recognition of Healthy Numbers Month, I'd like to issue a proclamation to February of 2018, getting to know your numbers month. Get Healthy Connecticut is a coalition dedicated to preventing and reducing obesity by removing barriers to healthy eating and increased physical activity through collaboration of key holders in the community. Heart disease and diabetes are top health concerns in Stratford, and Get Healthy Connecticut are seeking to raise awareness why these health issues and ways to control disease risk factors. We'd also like to present this proclamation this evening to our Director of Public Health, Andrea Bospin, who is on hand this evening for the presentation. May I?
Yeah.
Okay. [inaudible] Whereas Get Healthy CT is a coalition dedicated to preventing and reducing obesity by removing barriers to healthy eating and increased physical activity through collaboration of the state community. And whereas Get Healthy CT has identified heart disease and diabetes as the top health concern in Stratford, leads to unnecessary disability and premature mortality. And whereas, knowledge is the key to reducing the burden of heart disease and diabetes. And whereas, many Stratford residents are not aware of key health measures like blood sugar, blood pressure, body mass index, waist circumference, and cholesterol. And whereas, Get Healthy CT and its member organization, including the Stratford Health Association, are seeking to raise awareness about these health issues and ways to control disease risk factors. Now, therefore, the Honorable Lord, Friday, Mayor of Stratford, by virtue of the 30 best men heard by the town, and in the honor of your work done by Get Healthy CT, to approve the health of residents of the town of Stratford, we do hereby proclaim February 2018 as No Year Numbers Month. The town of Stratford, and as mayor, she calls upon residents, employees, students, visitors, and business owners who live and work in Stratford, to take charge of their health, to artly settle to a personal health data that can help them make informed decisions. She further encourages residents to take full advantage of available resources that are www.gethealthyct.org, including a listing of areas that he is offering to treat health through. And she... [applause]
Thank you, Mayor Hoedt. Next thing on 4.1.1, appointments. There's no appointments. 4.2 Committee Reports. There were no committee reports. I'm looking for a motion on 4.2.1 on Building Needs Committee.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that the change order amendments, 4.2.1A and B, Antonasi Amendment Number 29, in the amount of $105,397.50, an increase from Amendment Number 24 for work already performed, and Antonasi Amendment Number 30, in the amount of $76,647.50, increase from Amendment Number 24 for work not yet performed, be and are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion? Mr. Cahn.
Mr. Chairman, through the chair, I'd like to pass, a member of that committee, a specific question regarding Stratford High School. Are these projected expenses as part of the normal costs, or are they contingency expenses?
I see Mr. Alan Luellen in the audience. Would you step forward, Mr. Luellen?
No problem. Good evening. I'm Alan Luellen, 949 Huntington Road. So both of the items before you, which are labeled as Antonasi Amendments Number 29 and 30, those are both coming from the town's contingency for the project.
Is that sufficient, Mr.?
Yeah, that's a good clarification. If we could, you know, as we go forward, Alan, if the committee could please, you know, just make that definition?
I'm sure. If you kind of follow along with the monthly dashboards that you're going to get once the Building Needs Committee approves them, I believe there's actually a pie chart in there that shows the contingency spending. So as the project goes on, you'll see how much of that money and the percentages left over.
Yeah, that's the purpose, and thank you.
Yep, it's on that dashboard report.
Through to Chair. Mr. Kadim? Yes.
Thank you, Chair. The amount that's there with the change order, did it cover all the breakdowns that we had prior to this council taking the seat? Because you and I was on the council together last session, and we went through so many things in terms of the Stratford High Project, and a lot of the money was already allocated, broken down. So these are change orders to increase it? Is it coming from, are we adding to what we already approved? That's the question.
No, all of the contingency money that we're talking about is all within the current budget.
Okay, thank you. And how are we on task in terms of staying on budget? Because I know this company has a tendency to come on, to stay on budget, sometimes even save us money. How are we looking?
They're doing fantastic with regards to the budget. Their original construction budget was $103.5 million. They signed a GMP with us for under $100 million. So there's $3.5 million in savings right there. Additionally, there's still a properly sized town contingency that we're spending down from. The reason why you want the town's contingency to remain sizable right now is that contingency money also includes the furniture fixtures and equipment that will need to be purchased later on. So overall, our accounting for this project is running very, very good for where we are right now.
Well, Mr. Luellen, thank you for this, and also your service, because without you, I'd be in a dog, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. Kadim. Thank you, Mr. Luellen. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to note that Alan's official title here is Chairman of the Stratford High Building Needs Subcommittee, and he is doing a great job. And there's some of the people from Crack and Turner here, and everybody's doing a great job. As Mr. Kadim pointed out, they are known for doing stuff on time and on budget, and so far, we're doing a great job with that.
Thank you, Mr. Poissons. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to call to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes 10-0. 4.2.2, the Orders Committee met on January 22nd and referred to following ordinance of favorable recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the second reading of the Ordinance Number 18-01 revised fees for the Office of Planning and Zoning are set forth in the agenda to be dispensed with as copies thereof have been received by all council members, and that the ordinance be and is hereby approved effective 30 days from passage.
There's a motion on the floor from Mrs. Dancho. Is there a second?
Second, Dave Harden.
Second from Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion? If not, I will call this to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. And for the record, the attorneys did tell me this, so it was on me. Starting with District 1, Mr. Pia?
Aye.
Mr. Ticky?
Aye.
Mr. Kadim? Mr. Harden? Mr. Cahn? Mr. Poissons? Mr. Perillo?
Aye.
Mrs. Dancho?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so motion passes 10-0. Is there a motion on the next one, 4.2.2.2, Amendment to Chapter 161?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the second reading of Ordinance Number 18-2, Amendment to Chapter 161, Property Maintenance, Article 1 Anti-Blight Program set forth in the agenda to be dispensed with as copies thereof have been received by all council members, and the ordinance be and is hereby approved effective 30 days from passage.
There's a motion on the floor by Mrs. Dancho. Is there a second?
Second, Dave Harden.
Second from Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion? If not, I will call this to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. And for the record, the attorneys did tell me this, so it was on me. Starting with District 1, Mr. Pia?
Aye.
Mr. Ticky?
Aye.
Mr. Kadim? Mr. Harden? Mr. Cahn? Mr. Poissons? Mr. Perillo?
Aye.
Mrs. Dancho?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so motion passes 10-0. Is there a motion on the next one, 4.2.2.2, Amendment to Chapter 161?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the second reading of Ordinance Number 18-2, Amendment to Chapter 161, Property Maintenance, Article 1 Anti-Blight Program set forth in the agenda to be dispensed with as copies thereof have been received by all council members, and the ordinance be and is hereby approved effective 30 days from passage.
There's a motion on the floor by Mrs. Dancho. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion? If not, we're going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Pia? Mr. Ticky? Mr. Kadim? Mr. Harden? Mr. Cahn? Mr. Poissons?
Aye.
Mr. Perillo? Mr. O'Brien? Mrs. Dancho?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, so motion passes 10-0. The next item we have from the town attorney's report. We're going to make a, we're going to go into a motion to go in executive session that includes the town attorneys, the mayor, all the council, Mr.?
Mr. Ings.
Mr. Ings.
Chief Administrator Officer, Mr. Timniak.
And Mr. Down, Chief of Staff. And Mr. Wahlberg. I said the mayor. Yeah, this is pending litigation we're going into. There's a motion by Mr. Pia, second. Second by Mr. Ticky. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 10-0. We're going to go to executive session. The council meeting, February 13th, is reconvened at 9:03. Can I get a motion for 4.3.1 on an executive?
Come out of executive session. Kind of got to come out first. I have a motion to come out.
Motion, okay, motion to come out. Yep.
Yes, second.
Okay, as there's, who's the first?
Wally Kadim.
Wally first. Who's the second? Can't be both, Wally.
A second.
Okay. So now I'm still confused. Who's the first? Wally? Second is Mr. Pia. Okay. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll all vote to come out of executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so motion passes 10-0. Now, in 4.3.1, I need, the council needs a motion for the recommendation of the town attorneys?
Motion to authorize the town attorneys to proceed as discussed in executive session.
A motion to, for the town attorneys to exceed, to proceed with the agreement in executive session.
As discussed in... A motion to authorize the town attorney to proceed as discussed in executive session.
Hold on a second. Could you turn off the lights for a minute? No, it's not. It would be, Mr. Chairman, a motion to authorize the town attorney to proceed as discussed in executive session.
Can I get a motion for the town attorneys to proceed as discussed in executive session? Mrs. Dancho, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kadim. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
A motion, chair votes yea. Motion passes 9 to 1. The one is Mr. Perillo from the 7th District. Okay, on 6.1, I'm sorry, what? Oh. Is there any questions, the mayor?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Mayor Hoedt, congratulations on the grant for Roosevelt Forest. Right, please, the mic. I was, could you give us a general location, or where are those two parcels located?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The parcels are located off James Farms Road and north Peters Lane. Or Peters Lane, the one that goes up to Roosevelt Forest. North Peters Lane. Or Peters Lane, the one that goes up to Roosevelt Forest. Onto the entrance of the park through Roosevelt Forest, that road, and James Farms Road.
Is the James Farm Road property the same one that was being, uh, asked about in regards to the housing development?
It is 795 James Farms Road, yes.
Thank you, Mayor Hoedick.
Is there any other questions for the mayor? Mr. Kadim?
Thank you, Chair. Through the chair. May I just want to say thank you for opening a dialogue, um, the other day, last month, you were speaking about Juliet Low as well as the Splash Park. Thank you very much. Um, and so I don't want to speak on record about this, but I will be coming to see you. We have time to go over what, what progress was made, if any. But I do have a question about the Splash Park. Is there any questions you have in terms of where, where the location that we want to put it at? Um, you have any of reasons why you don't think it should go there, or you think it should be somewhere else?
I don't necessarily think, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I, I don't think it should necessarily go someplace else. My only concern, and you and I spoke about this when we were together, is you had mentioned that there will be, be people from outside of town coming to the Splash Park because it's a desired thing to do. And so I just want to make sure that there's adequate parking so that we don't clog, um, the roadways or, um, affect residents whose houses are surrounding that property.
I will say this. Thank you very much, madam. I will say this. Firstly, that's going on, because I'm on Parking and Rec Department for so many years, I know that the Splash Park up in, um, Penders Field gets a lot of popularity, and they speak about it from other towns. And I'm not sure if that's going to occur with ours, I've just taken that into account, that that may be, um, something that may occur. The basis of having it there, because a lot of people down out and don't have a car to drive up to Penders so their children can enjoy it, they'll be able to walk there. And there is adequate parking, not only just at the school. The school ends at three. So, so there's a lot of parking there as well as on the street. And I don't really see that as a problem. I think we should push forward with that regardless, because it's not like it's going to be used like a pool is used, you know? Pool is constant. But a splash park is based upon your availability and work and so forth. So I don't really find any problems with that, because there's no parking at Penders either, by the way. There's no parking.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
There is parking by Penders. The parking at Penders is closer than the parking at the school. However, your point's well taken, um, and I think it's something that we need to look at, and we have to, um, through the Community Development Block Grant Subcommittee, has to recommend the additional funding for that project.
Okay.
Juliet Low Park, as you know, has, is fully funded. This one is not.
Yes, indeed. And it's funny you said that, because looking at the budget, that money was held over for parks, over 200-plus thousand was held over from 20, I think it was 13 on out. And, um, they also asked for additional money tonight, I think another 60,000 for parks. But in any event, just, just speaking a little bit about the, um, the Committee for the CBG, you know, Community Block Grant, money has always been allocated throughout the years, and they keep reallocating it for other projects, and this is really raggedy. We need to really solidify what we're doing, move it along the way we should so that it can happen. Because it shouldn't happen that way, that, this is prior to me even being on the council two years ago, not just this term, but the term prior to this. And hopefully, we can get a better understanding of how to move forward, because we do have a blueprint. We have one up at Penders. So we have a blueprint on, you know, the fact that it can be done, and also, especially there, because there's plumbing there, there's power there from the lights that was put there. It was expressed to me that the power grid that was there was going to be used as well for the pumps for the, the Splash Park. And it's in a beautiful location. I know you've been there. It's in a beautiful location. It's got the track right there, you got the field, baseball, you do football, do anything you want over there, right next to the two schools. So it really is, it'd be a plus to the community. It really would be.
Well, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, it's up to the Subcommittee, again, as I mentioned, to adequately fund the project, and then we can move forward. You can make the recommendation to the council, and then we can go from there.
Thank you very much, madam.
If there's not any more questions for the mayor, um, I'd like to move to six unfinished business and old business. Um, there's no tabled items. We're going to leave the cost of the dog park on the table. I'm sorry. Yeah. Yep. Okay, so we got 6.2.1. Um, is there a motion to take this off the table?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to take 6.2.1A on the table.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Poissons to take 6.2.1, seconded by Mr. Kadim on the table. Is there any discussion? If not, I call this a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes as yes. Motion passes 10 to 0. Is there, uh, another motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that the second reading of Ordinance Number 17-05 and ordinance appropriating $12,510,500 for various public improvements in the CIP program for fiscal year 2017-18 be dispensed with, and that the item be amended as follows: that the amount of $4,498,705 be appropriated for the public improvements and equipment in the CIP for the town for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, as further set forth in the amended ordinance provided to all council members.
There's a motion by Mr. Poissons. On the floor, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Perillo. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Call this a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
That was the vote on the amendment.
The mo, yes. So we voted on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 10-0 with the chair voting for it. Okay, Mr. Mr. Poissons, is there another motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to now move that Ordinance Number 17-05, as amended, be approved effective 30 days from passage.
There's an amendment by Mr. Poissons. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Pia. Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call. Okay. Um, Mr. Pia?
Aye.
Mr. Tiki? Mr. Kadim? Mr. Harden?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. Poissons?
Aye.
Mr. Perillo? Mr. O'Brien? Mrs. Danchow?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so motion passes 10-0. Okay, now we're going to, tabled appointments. No? 6.2.1B?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that Item 6.2.1B be taken off the table.
There's a motion to take it off the table from Mr. Poissons?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tiki. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes, uh, yea. Motion's off the table.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to now move that the second reading of Ordinance Number 17-06 and ordinance authorizing the issuance of $12,510,500 of bonds of the town to meet the appropriation for various public improvements in the CIP for fiscal year 2017-18, and pending issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose be dispensed with, and that the item be amended as follows: that the issuance of bonds in the amount of $4,498,705 be authorized to meet the appropriations for various public improvements and equipment in the CIP for fiscal year 2017-18, as further set forth in the amended ordinance provided to all council members.
There's a, uh, motion on the floor from Mr. Poissons, a second? Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to a roll, uh, roll call vote. Mr. Pia?
No, 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 Mr. Chairman. You do this by voice vote, because this is on the amendment.
I'm sorry, what?
You're voting on, you're voting on the amendment, so it can be a voice vote.
Um, is, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, um, motion passes 10-0. Mr. Poissons?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to now move that Ordinance Number 17-06, as amended, be approved effective 30 days from passage.
Seconded by, uh, motion on the floor by Mr. Poissons, seconded by, uh, Mr. O'Brien. Is there any discussion? No discussion. This is roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Pia?
Aye.
Mr. Tiki? Mr. Kadim? Mr. Harden? Mr. Khan? Mr. Poissons?
Aye.
Mr. Perillo? Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mrs. Danchow?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Uh, motion passes 10-0.
Now 6.2.1C should be stricken.
Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, for, um, I'd like to make a motion that Item 6.2.1, uh, be stricken from the agenda.
That should be 6.2.1C.
6.2.1C, my apologies. Be stricken from the agenda.
There's a motion on the floor from Mr. Poissons. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Harden. Uh, any discussion about the motion to strike from the, from the, uh, the agenda? No discussion?
Voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. All in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, chair votes yes. Motion passes 10-0.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, Item 6.2.1D also be stricken from the agenda.
Second, uh, Poissons, Mr. Poissons, uh, motion to strike, seconded by Mr. Pia. Uh, any discussion on this? If not, all in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes 10-0. Now we're going to 6.3, tabled appointments. Uh, 6.3.2, there's, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals, alternate position. Can I get a motion? Mr. O'Brien?
I'd make a motion that John Dempsey, who is hereby appointed alternate member of the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Is there a second?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, you, you actually have two alternate positions. The motion should specify whether that is the term expiring January 1/17, or the term that expired January 1/18. You have both A and B under 6.3.2.
Okay.
You have to specify which slot.
So can we do it in one motion, or it has to be two separate ones?
You have.
Is it two motions?
Well, are you appointing two people? Do you have two vacancies?
Two vacancies, you were appointing two people, that's correct.
No, you, you can actually do them together, but I think you could, you should specify who is going into what slot.
Okay.
Because if you look at the, at the agenda, 6.3.2A, that's the term of Mr. Fredette that expired 1/1/17. The other one is Mr. Grega that expired 1/1/18. So you can move both of them in one motion. You just need to specify what individual is going to be
Okay.
In what vacancy.
Okay, make your motion that John Dempsey be and is hereby appointed an alternate, an alternate member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the term of Richard Fredette, expired January 1st, 2017, and that Len Petraselli be and is hereby appointed an alternate member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, term of Thomas Grega, expired January 1st, 2018.
All right, there's a motion on the floor from Mr. O'Brien. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion? If not, call to a roll, uh, a voice vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, chair votes for it, and member passes 10, uh, motion passes 10-0. Now we're at 6.3.3, Committee Appointments.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that Item 6.3.3 be taken from the table.
6.3.3 by Mr. Pia, uh, seconded by Mr. Tiki. Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes 10-0.
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, I move that the following names be appointed, be hereby appointed to the Beautification Committee with terms concurrent with the Town Council term. Laura Danchow, Jen Riley Young, excuse me, Christine Griffin, Rita Sakatia, Anne Ferris, Florence Kugurunda, Donna Caserta, Janice Coupie, Patricia Ritchie, Barbara Julian, and a representative from the Public Works Department.
There's a motion from Mr. Pia on the floor. Is there a second?
Second by Dave Harden.
Second, Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Kadim?
Yes, um, you had a young lady on there named Sylvia Martin. She worked very well with them. They liked her there. And also, um, I understand that's something that can be added later if possible. Please consider her going forward, everyone. Um, and also, another young lady that works well with them, um, she's been removed also. Help me out, because I don't remember. Say her name. Dave. What's her name? What's the young lady that was also there helping? Doing well? What's her name?
Well, if you know the name, Mr. Chair.
Listen.
If you know the name, please say it.
Thank you. Hannah Suzanne. Thank you. She's, she's also been removed, so these two people I would like to be considered going forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other, uh, discussion?
Okay, brother.
If not, we'll call to a vote. All in favor of the name submitted by Mr. Pia, vote aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 10-0. Mr. Pia?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I move that the following individuals be appointed and be hereby appointed to the Board of Ed Liaison Committee with terms concurrent with the Town Council. Bill O'Brien, Wally Kadim, Ron Tiki, and Bill Perillo.
There's a motion on the floor from Mr. P. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes 10-0. The Booth Park Commission, there's only two people you need to discuss, Mr. P.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that the appointments to the Booth Park Commission be stricken from the agenda, as this is, was a mayoral appointment by Mayor Hoedick previously in the meeting.
Just for an information point, though, um, by ordinance, the 8th District is on there, and we're also going to put down, uh, Mr. Harden is going to be on the, uh...
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, Building Needs Committee. Oh?
I second.
Oh? Second, okay. Yeah. So all, all, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, chair votes it. Motion, motion passes 10-0. Okay, Building Needs.
I'd like to move that the following individuals, uh, be hereby appointed to the Building Needs Committee with terms concurrent to the Town Council. Ken Poissons, Ron Tiki, Wally Kadim, Jim Connor, Paul Hoedick, Allen Llewellyn, excuse me, John Dempsey, Daniel Semph, and Linda?
Manis.
Manis, thank you.
Mr. Pia, you're missing two?
Uh, the additional two, I'm sorry. I have my list here. I apologize, Mr. Chair, would be Len Petraselli and Vincent Chase.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor from Mr. Pia. Uh, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion? If not, call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes 10 to 0. Community Development, the mayor already addressed that.
And, Mr. Chairman, actually, you need someone to move that the mayor's appointments to the Community Development Subcommittee of the Economic Development Commission, Mr. Con, Harden, Kadim, Mizera, and Santi, with terms concurrent with the Town Council term, be confirmed.
So, uh...
Second.
So moved by Mr. Poissons, seconded by, was that Mr. Tiki?
Pia.
No, okay. Pia. Yes.
Which I can't get this to work. Okay. Um, I believe both Subcommittee and Commission need to be approved, correct?
Yeah, they came up separate. They will. They're going to do another one, the second one, in a moment. They're listed separate on the agenda, so they're...
On, on the council agenda, but not on the...
Right, right. Right now, they're doing the, the Community Development Subcommittee in a moment. They'll do the Economic Development Commission.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Mayor. Um, okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion of ratifying the mayor's recommendation? Vote aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, chair votes, uh, yes. Uh, motion passes 10 to 0. The Conservation Commission, we have, uh, did you, did you?
No, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion on that.
Okay.
Uh, I move that Laura Danchow be, uh, hereby appointed to the Conservation Committee Commission with terms concurrent to the Town Council term.
Second.
There's a second by, uh, Miss, by Mr. Pia, and a second by Mrs. Danchow, and is there any further discussion, or any discussion? If not, call to vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten to zero. Economic Development Commission, this is the one you're talking about being ratified?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion on that.
Yep.
I move that the mayor's appointees to the Economic Development, Economic Community Development Commission: Randy Vidal, as previously mentioned by the mayor in the report, Randy Vidal, Neil Sherman, Jim Benson, Mark Calzone, Colin Kennedy, Frank Bofakwa, John Dobus, Gary Pia, Bill Kraus... Excuse me, I'd like to strike Bill Kraus from the record, Mr. Chair, and alternates of Mike Vicarrelli and Robert Rosati, with terms concurrent with the Town Council be hereby...
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Second by Mr. Harden. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero. EMS Funding Committee, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that Dave Harden and Bill Perillo be hereby appointed to the EMS Funding Committee with terms concurrent to the Town Council.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tiki. Any further discussion? Any discussion? If not, call to vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero. Mr. Pia on Finance and Claims?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that for Finance and Claims, Bill Perillo, Bill O'Brien, Jim Connor, Greg Khan, and Chris Pia be appointed to the Finance and Claims Committee with terms concurrent to the Town Council.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second, Mr. Tiki, is there any discussion? If not, call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero, the chair votes. The Financial Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the Finance Advisory Committee on the table.
There's a motion to put the Financial Advisory Committee on second. Second by Mrs. Dantcho, any discussion? Call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero. Longbrook Park Commission.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that Ron Tiki, Bill Perillo, and Dave Harden be hereby appointed to the Longbrook Park Commission with terms concurrent to the Town Council.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Dantcho, is there any discussion? If not, we'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes ten zero. Parks and Recreation Committee.
Mr. Chairman, yes, thank you, sir. I move that Bill O'Brien and Ken Poissons be hereby appointed with electorate members of Paul Hoedick, Wally Kadim, Walter Stelmec, Robert Jaigle, Rick, Richard Marcone, Gary Bauer, and Sarah Martin, with an alternate member of Sarah Calzone, be appointed to the Parks and Rec Committee with terms concurrent to the Town Council.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second? Second by Mr. Harden, is there any discussion? On floor. Motion on the floor, is there a second? Mr. Harden, any discussion? If not, we'll call it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes ten zero. Public Safety.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the following council, councilman be appointed: Bill Perillo as chair, Greg Khan, Laura Dantcho, and Chris Pia, with electorate members of Paul Aurelia, Christopher Ciucci, James Wilson, and James Duffy, be appointed to the Public Safety Committee with terms concurrent to the Town Council.
There's a motion on the table, is there, I mean, second by Mr. Harden. Is any discussion? If not, call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes nine, ten zero, with the chair voting for it. Public Works.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may. I move that Laura Dantcho, Greg Khan, Bill O'Brien, Bill Perillo, Dave Harden, and Ron Tiki as chair be appointed to the Public Works Committee with terms concurrent to the Town Council.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. O'Brien. Is any discussion? If not, call to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes ten to zero. Roosevelt Forest Commission, the mayor addressed that before.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that I move that the appointments of the Roosevelt Forest Commission be stricken from the agenda, as this is a mayoral appointment.
There's a motion to strike from the agenda, is there a second? Mr. Tiki? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero. Short Beach Commission.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that Dave Harden and Chris Pia be hereby appointed to the Short Beach Commission with terms concurrent to the Town Council.
There's one on, a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Perillo. Any discussion? If not, we'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten to zero, with the chair voting with the majority. Tax Partnership.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that Bill Perillo, Laura Dantcho, and Chris Pia as chair be appointed to the Tax Partnership Screening Committee with terms concurrent to the Town Council.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Harden. Any discussion? If not, call it a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero. Go to six point three point four, Commission on Aging.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, did I miss something?
If I may, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Regarding the Redevelopment Agency. I move to suspend the rules to add the following to the agenda: That the mayor's appointments, appointees to the Stratford Redevelopment Agency, Eric Hampton, Anthony Nizardo, George Perm, Richard Whalen, and Randy Vidal, and TOD Subcommittee members Tom Dillon, Tom Fahey, Eric Hampton, Mike, Michael Henrich, Patty Galella, Mark Jarvis, and Daniel Pato be hereby confirmed, as previously stated by the mayor in the report.
There's a motion on the floor.
I second.
Second by Mr. Tiki, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes ten zero. I apologize, Mayor. We're on six point three point four, Commission on Aging.
Mr. Chairman, you have that now on the agenda. There has to be a motion to, that the mayor's appointees to the Stratford Redevelopment Agency, as previously articulated, are confirmed.
I would like to make that motion, per the town attorney, Brian Leclerc.
Second by Mr. Tiki. All in favor? I'm sorry, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes ten zero. Now on to six point three point four, okay. Commission on Aging, and is there a motion to reappoint?
Mr. Chairman, that's on the table, it has to come off the table first. Please.
Yep, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that item six point three point four be taken from the table.
Is there a second on the floor, Mr. Harden? Is there any discussion? If not? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes ten to zero. Okay, now, six point three point four, A and B. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. I move that Carl Glad is hereby appointed a member of the Commission of Aging with a term of Carl Glad expire November thirtieth of two thousand seventeen, and that Kathy Fajella be hereby his appointed member of the Commission on Aging with a term of Kathy Fajella expire November thirtieth of two thousand seventeen.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Tiki. On floor. Motion on the floor. Is there a second by Mr. Tiki? Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes ten to zero. Six point three point five, Planning Commission.
I make a motion, six point three point five, Planning Commission be taken off the table.
A second.
Second by, a motion by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion? If not, call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten zero. Now, Mr. O'Brien?
Make a motion that... Oh, boy, Jennifer who? I forgot, didn't have the last name.
Tremassani.
Tremassani. Oh, as I see, there she is, Tremassani. Being hereby appointed an alternate member of the Planning Commission for her term that expires January two thousand eighteen.
Is there a second from Mrs. Dantcho? Any discussion? If not, we'll call it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten to zero. Zoning Commission.
I make a motion that six point three point six, Zoning Commission be taken off the table.
There's a motion to take it off, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tiki? Is there any, any discussion? If not, we'll call it to a vote, to take it off the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten to zero. Now, Mr. O'Brien?
I make a motion that Linda Manos be and is hereby appointed an alternate member of the Zoning Commission for the term of Gavin Forrester expired in January two thousand eighteen.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Second by Mr. Harden. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten to zero. Now we're on to seven point one. Is there a motion on the, on the table for seven point one? Can I get a...
Mr. Chairman, I move that item seven point one and B be and is hereby approved.
There's a sec, there's a motion from Mr. Pia, is there a second? Second by Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion on this? If not, we'll call, favor, all in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten to zero. Seven point two. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the item seven point two be and is hereby approved.
Mr. Perillo has a motion on the floor, is there a second? Mr. Tiki? Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes ten to zero. Seven point three, there's a resolution regarding grant program. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item seven point three be and is hereby approved.
Is there a second? Mrs. Dantcho, second. Is there any discussion? If not, call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes ten to zero. Seven point four, Mr. Pia, I think you have the lead on this.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that item seven point four be approved.
Mr. Pia has made a motion to approve seven point four, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tiki. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call it to a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes ten to zero. Seven point five.
Mr. Chairman, I move that item seven point five be approved.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Seven point six.
Mr. Chairman, I move that item seven point six be approved.
Motion by Mr. Pia, second by Mr. Perillo. Is there any discussion? If not, call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes ten to zero. Seven point seven. This is the collective bargaining agreement? We're going to leave this on the table. I'm not on the table, I'm sorry, I might leave it.
Not on the table.
Resolution regarding community economic development administrator?
I think... Skip one, Mr. Chair.
Seven point seven, there's, you, right, you have to take, you either have to move the item or you have to, you should put it on the table. This is the one that just requires approval of the, seven point seven requires an approval of the funding for the collective bargaining agreement with the Supervisors Union.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
Just call it one minute recess.
We'll call it one minute recess. We're going to...